Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'll now read the council prayer. Almighty God, we humbly seek your blessing upon this council, direct and prosper its deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Burundara. Amen. And I'll now call upon councillor Gillies to read the acknowledgement of country.
Thank you, Chair. I acknowledge the Warundri Warung people as the traditional owners and original custodians of this land, and pay my respects to their elders, past and present, and the elders from other communities who may be here today.
Thank you, councillor Gillies. So, welcome, everyone, to tonight's council meeting. My name is Jane Addis, councillor Jane Addis, and I'm the mayor of the city of Burundara. The purpose of this meeting is for the council to elect for the 2022-23 year the mayor, deputy mayor, and chairpersons of the Urban Planning and Services Delegated Committees, and to appoint councillors to the Audit and Risk Committee. In accordance with the Local Government Act 2020, the council's governance and the council's governance rules, I must vacate the position of mayor at the time and on the day of the election of the new mayor. At this point of the meeting, the chief executive officer, Mr Philip Storey, will become temporary chair of the meeting. Further, the Local Government Act 2020 enables council to hold virtual meetings with councillors participating remotely by electronic communication. The council meeting is being livestreamed on the council website to enable public viewing of the proceedings, including councillor deliberations and voting. The meeting is also being recorded and will be made available on the council website soon after the meeting. Should technical problems be encountered, then the meeting will be adjourned until resolution. However, council is not responsible for any technical difficulties that may be experienced by a member of the community in participating remotely in this meeting. I acknowledge all councillors are present and on screen for tonight's meeting, and there are also members of the executive team and other staff in attendance this evening to assist us. This meeting commenced on 21 November 2022. At that meeting, council resolved to adjourn the business in that council meeting to today. So can I please have a motion to resume the adjourned meeting from the 21st of November 2022 at 8:30pm tonight? So councillor Sinfield, you're happy to move that?
I am.
And seconded councillor Hollingsworth? Thank you. Is there any opposition to that motion? I can see no opposition, so I'll declare that motion carried. Thank you, councillors. Apologies, Mr Wei, are there any apologies for this evening?
Sure, you matter mayor, there are no apologies this evening.
Thank you. Declaration of conflict of interest of any councillor or council officers. Councillors and council officers, are there any conflicts of interest that need to be declared? Thank you, there are none. It's now time to commence the election of the new mayor, and I will now vacate the position of mayor and join my councillor colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillors, I'm in search of a nomination for the position of mayor for the upcoming year. So could I please have a nomination? Councillor Hollingsworth, I've seen your hand go up. Are we nominated?
Thank you. I wish to nominate councillor Sinfield.
Thank you. Is there a seconder? Councillor Gillies, I've seen your hand go up.
I beg your pardon, Chair, that was an error on my part.
Oh, thank you. A seconder? Councillor Park? Thank you. Councillor Sinfield, do you accept the nomination?
Sorry, we're playing unmute tag there. Yes, I do.
Oh, thank you very much. Are there any further nominations? Councillor Gillies?
I nominate councillor Addis.
Thank you. Is there a seconder? Councillor Golt, thank you. Do you accept the nomination, councillor Addis?
I do. Thank you, Mr Storey.
Thank you. It's now my intention to ask, are there any further nominations? I don't believe we can have any further nominations. I've covered this message a little earlier with councillors, but for the community who was watching, this is a continuation of a previous election which was held on the 21st of November. We have the two nominations before us. They've been confirmed again this evening, and we therefore will continue on the basis that we have only the two nominees, as is the case. What I'm going to do, therefore, is to put forward councillor Sinfield as the first nominated candidate, and ask for those in support of councillor Sinfield, being the mayor, raise your hands. I see five hands, thank you. And those who are... Sorry, I missed one, did I? Could you please raise your hands again? I'm looking at a number of faces here. One, two, three, four, five. Councillor Hollingsworth, I've only seen five.
There are six, six hands shown.
So I thought councillor Franco's hand was up. I may have mistaken.
Oh, I must have missed, sorry, I must have missed your hand. I'm going to call the names, to be sure. Councillor Sinfield, councillor Watson, councillor Hollingsworth, councillor Park, councillor Franco. Did I miss anyone? No?
Councillor Stavru's hand is up.
Councillor Stavru, sorry, I couldn't see your hand in the light there. Thank you. And could I therefore also ask for those in support of councillor Addis to raise their hands? Five. On that basis, I declare councillor Sinfield to be the mayor for the upcoming year. Congratulations, and well done.
Thank you very much.
And you now have the privilege of chairing the balance of this meeting, councillor Sinfield.
Thank you. I'll just compose myself. I appreciate the support immensely. I'll just find my notes. As I scroll down to the right point, my apologies, I was not expecting to actually need these notes, so while I had them open on the attachment from Mr Wei, I'll just find the appropriate point. That brings us to point three.
Councillor Sinfield, I'm wondering whether it would be helpful for you, given you do need to chair the rest of the meeting, and there may be some briefing which might be helpful for you, would you appreciate a five-minute adjournment for that purpose?
I think that's an exceptional idea. Thank you, Mr Storey.
Why don't we? So moved. It's been seconded councillor Sinfield by councillor Thompson. Doesn't appear to be any objections, in which case you can declare that carried.
Thank you, I will. Let's resume at 8:45, please. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Apologies for the short adjournment. Could I please have somebody move to resume the meeting? Councillor Park? And councillor Bigger? I saw your hand second. Happy to second? Thank you. I assume there's no opposition to that. Declare that carried. Thank you, everybody. Councillors, the next part of the meeting this evening is the election of deputy mayor for 2022-2023. Councillors, could I please have a nomination for the position of deputy mayor for the city of Burundara for the coming year? Councillor Golt, I saw your hand first.
I nominate councillor Gillies.
Thank you. And a seconder? Councillor Addis?
I'm so seconded, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Gillies, do you accept that nomination?
Thank you, Mayor, I do.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations? Councillor Park?
Nominate councillor Hollingsworth.
Thank you. And do I have a seconder? Councillor Watson?
Happy to second that nomination. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And councillor Hollingsworth, do you accept that nomination?
I do, and I thank councillor Park and councillor Watson for the nominations. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations? Doesn't appear so. Correct me if I'm wrong. There being no further nominations, then we need to move into a process to vote for either councillor Gillies or councillor Hollingsworth. So, being the first nominated councillor Gillies, I'll call for a show of hands first for support for councillor Gillies. And as we did last time, for clarity, I will call them out. I can see councillor Gillies, councillor Addis, councillor Thompson, councillor Golt, councillor Bigger. Have I missed anyone? No, that's five. And can I see a show of hands, please, for councillor Hollingsworth? I can see councillor Hollingsworth, councillor Park, councillor Watson, councillor Franco, councillor Stavru. Have I missed anyone? I feel as though I have. Was that five? I've run out of fingers.
You've missed yourself.
Oh, yes, there's a trap for young players. I support councillor Hollingsworth, which takes us to six. Was any of that erroneous? Other than my own trip up? That being the case, I declare councillor Hollingsworth deputy mayor for 2022-2023. Congratulations, councillor Hollingsworth.
Thank you. If I may, thank you all for your support. It's very much appreciated.
Okay, next on the running sheet. Where are we? Apologies, there is a lot of administration here. That brings us to item four, the election of a chair to the Urban Planning Delegated Committee and Services Delegated Committee for 2022-2023. First, we will do the Urban Planning Delegated Committee Chair. Councillors, could I have a nomination for the position of chairperson of the Urban Planning Delegated Committee? Councillor Park?
Thank you, Mayor. I nominate councillor Nick Stavru.
Thank you. And do I have a seconder? Councillor Hollingsworth?
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Stavru, do you accept that nomination? Thank you. Are there any further nominations? Councillor Addis?
Councillor Golt, thanks.
Certainly. And do I have a seconder? Councillor Bigger?
Happy to second, thank you.
And councillor Golt, do you accept that nomination?
I do, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll run the same process, assuming that there are no further nominations. There being none. Can I therefore see a show of hands, please, for councillor Stavru as he was first nominated? Councillor Park, councillor Watson, councillor Stavru, councillor Hollingsworth, councillor Sinfield, I won't make the same mistake. Are there any that I have missed? No. That was five. And can I see a show of hands, please, for support for councillor Golt? Councillor Addis, councillor Thompson, councillor Gillies, councillor Golt, councillor Bigger. That also brings us to five. Councillor Franco, did I see you vote for either?
No.
Okay. Are you intending to abstain from this vote?
Unless there's any reason for me not to. Is it required under the... Well, I'll abstain for the time being.
At the moment, we have five votes for councillor Stavru and five votes for councillor Golt. I propose to conduct that vote again, if governance allow me to, before we would move to the process of drawing lots to resolve that.
I'd suggest hearing from the candidates as to why they think they're suitable, why they deserve... Look, perhaps there's assumptions that people are voting a particular way and everything's locked in. But for me, neither candidate, you know, conversations occur in private. I haven't been party to any conversations with either of the candidates, and it's probably an assumption that people are voting in a particular way, but I am not party to that. If the candidates don't want to present their case, then that's fine too. But I think that would be a good way, a good step forward, rather than just putting a vote for them again.
Thank you, councillor Franco. You have made your point, which does seem valid, but I'll just pause for a moment while I seek some governance advice. I'm not sure if we're permitted to do that at this point. While it seems like a fair and reasonable thing to do, neither candidate has necessarily had the opportunity to prepare such a presentation, so I'll just pause for a moment and seek governance advice. Colleagues, I'm advised that it is permitted, but I will seek feedback from the two candidates as to whether they are willing to accept that opportunity first. Councillor Bigger, you have a question?
I did have a question. I just wonder if it's too late to nominate a third candidate.
Mr Wei, can I seek your advice on that?
I believe councillor... Sorry, Madam Mayor, I believe that we're at the point of voting now, so it would be preferable to conduct this vote.
I have a further question for the governance manager, if I may. If, if, how many votes do we go through before the vote doesn't count, and then can a different candidate nominate as well? So it's just an extension of the question from councillor Bigger.
The vote for chair of delegated committees is a council appointment. So it's a matter for council as to any appropriate procedural motion that they may wish to put if the vote isn't successful.
Does that assist? The vote hasn't been successful. If I could make, the vote has not been successful, and councillor Bigger asked a question about an alternative process. So then that alternative process is viable. Is that correct?
Mr Wei?
Councillors, it's a matter for you to put procedural motions that are under governance rules.
So that being the case, I will revert to my previous comment and suggest that the way forward might be to cast another vote, and should that not resolve the matter, then we will proceed to the drawing of lots. Councillor Park?
Chair, might I suggest that you might consider canvassing with the two candidates whether they're willing to address council as suggested by councillor Franco. I mean, if if neither is willing, then then that disposes of the issue. If one or both are willing, then I'd suggest that that might assist the process, because otherwise we run the likelihood that a vote that's just re-put might well result in the same outcome.
Yes, I concur with your suggestion. Councillor Park, councillor Golt?
I'm happy to present a very brief case tonight, if you so choose.
Thank you, councillor Golt. And councillor Stavru?
As am I, if that's the wish. It doesn't seem that it was done in the previous vote, but yes. If that's the wish of the council.
Thank you, councillor Stavru. Then I might propose a short adjournment then till 9:05pm to allow our colleagues a few moments to put a few bullet points together and compose their ideas. Is someone willing to move that? Councillor Thompson? Thank you. And councillor Bigger? Happy to second. Thank you. This meeting will be adjourned till 9:05. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Before our short adjournment, we sought nominations for the position of Chair of the Urban Planning Delegated Committee. The two nominees were councillor Stavru and councillor Golt. We have clarified where we sit with governance, and I now propose to to host a vote for the position of Chair of Urban Planning Delegated Committee. So can we start, please, with raising hands in support of councillor... My apologies, I think we need to actually resume this meeting. That was an oversight. My apologies. Councillor Thompson?
May I resume? Put a motion forward, Madam May?
Thank you very much. And a seconder, councillor Bigger?
Happy to second.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to resuming this meeting from the adjournment? There appears none that is carried. So back to the business of where we were. So we will now cast a vote for support of our two nominees, councillor Stavru and councillor Golt, for the position of Chair of Urban Planning Delegated Committee. As the first nominated candidate, I propose that the vote for councillor Stavru will take place first. So those in support of councillor Stavru, please raise your hand. I have councillor Stavru, councillor Park, councillor Watson, councillor Franco, councillor Hollingsworth, and councillor Sinfield. That is six. Did I miss anybody? No. And now, can I see a show of hands, please, for those in support of councillor Golt? I can see councillor Golt, councillor Gillies, councillor Thompson, councillor Addis, and councillor Bigger. That is five. So on that basis, I can declare the Chair of the Urban Planning Delegated Committee for 22-23 is councillor Stavru. Congratulations.
Thank you, councillors.
The next point of business is the Chair of the Services Delegated Committee for 22-23. And bear with me a moment while I just scroll to the appropriate point in my notes. Councillors, could I please have a nomination for the position of Chair of the Services Delegated Committee? Councillor Thompson?
May I nominate councillor Gillies?
Thank you. And do I have a seconder? Councillor Addis? Thank you. And councillor Gillies, do you accept that nomination?
Thank you, Chair, I do.
Thank you. Are there any further nominations? This one's nice and easy. There being no further nominations, we can declare councillor Gillies the Chair of the Services Delegated Committee. Governance, please correct me if I'm wrong in declaring that. Can we do that? We can. Excellent. Congratulations, councillor Gillies.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
The next point in our agenda is the Audit and Risk Committee membership for 22-23. Councillors, I'm in search of nominees, please, for the Audit and Risk Committee for 22-23. And I... Councillor Thompson?
Madam Mayor, I've not had a chance to speak to this councillor, but I would wonder if councillor Stavru would be interested in accepting a nomination.
Thank you. And councillor Stavru, do you accept that nomination?
I haven't spoken with anyone, but yes, I would.
And...
Do we need a seconder, Madam May?
Well, I'm not sure that we do. I think this is a little bit different. Mr Wei, are you in a position to provide some advice?
We do need a seconder, Madam Mayor, in my view.
We do? Certainly. And do we have a seconder? Councillor Watson? You're happy to second that nomination of councillor Stavru? Sorry, you're playing mute/unmute tag there.
Happy to second the nomination, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So that's moved and seconded, and the nomination is accepted. We need a second nomination. Councillor Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Look, I haven't actually asked councillor Park, but I would like to nominate councillor Park.
Thank you. And do we have a seconder? Councillor Watson?
Happy to second the nomination.
Thank you. And councillor Park, do you accept that nomination?
Yes, I'm happy to accept that nomination. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And are there any further nominations? Councillor Bigger?
I'd like to nominate councillor Addis, if she's willing.
Thank you. And do we have a seconder? Councillor Gillies, councillor Addis, do you accept that nomination?
Look, I very much thank my colleagues, but no, thank you very much. I really appreciate the nomination.
Thank you, councillor Addis. Are there any further nominations? There appear to be none. There being no further nominations, then I believe we can declare that the two councillors, councillor Stavru and councillor Park, as members of the Audit and Risk Committee. So, hold on, bear with me two seconds. That appears contradictory to the next paragraph. Do we now need to put that to the vote, Mr Wei? Or we can make that declaration?
We would. It's a resolution of council, so it would need to be put to the vote.
Excellent. Councillor Hollingsworth, you're prepared to move a motion at councillor's...
Look, sorry, I am, but I just wanted to clarify, is it only two candidates required for the Audit and Risk? It is two candidates? Right. Thank you. I'm certainly happy to move a motion, yes.
And officers, do we need to say that on the screen? I'm not sure that we do. The motion our trust would read that the nominated candidates, councillor Stavru and councillor Park, be members of the Audit and Risk Committee. Move councillor...
Thank you, yes.
And do we have a second up? Councillor Thompson? All those in favour? I declare that carried unanimously. Thank you, councillors. Council and committee meeting schedule for 2023. To introduce this report, I call upon the manager of governance and legal.
Councillors, under the Local Government Act, councils are required to periodically call meetings in advance. And council has traditionally, this council has traditionally called meetings annually in advance. I commend to you a schedule of meetings that are attached to the recommended resolution. The Local Government Act does allow the chief executive officer in consultation with the mayor to call unscheduled meetings as required. And the schedule of meetings is attached to the report that officers recommend council adopt with the exception of one change that is suggested on page, on the second last page of the report where there is an incorrect date. Monday 18th of September for the council meeting should be replaced with Monday 25th of September. And that will be reflected in the resolution. If this resolution is passed, the attachment will reflect that change. Thank you, councillors. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr Wei. Councillor Franco?
I have a question, Mr Wei, and perhaps it's my lack of attention, but did you say on the penultimate page, we changed Monday 18th December as a council meeting for Monday 25th of December as a council meeting? So Christmas Day.
Eighteenth September, councillor Franco, not eighteenth December. So eighteenth of September, Monday 18th of September, be replaced for Monday the 25th of September. So not Christmas, but in September, councillor Franco.
Thank you, Mr Wei. Councillor Franco, is that clear? September, not December?
U P D C, then C B D on the 18th September, on 18th September, and in council on 25th September. Is that the corrected version? Have I got it now?
Yes, that's correct, councillor Franco.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Franco. And Mr Wei, are there any further questions for the officers? There being none, is somebody prepared to move the motion that was on the screen? Councillor Thompson?
May I move that, Madam Mayor?
Thank you. And councillor Park? You're happy to second? Thank you. Sorry, the mute game is not our friend tonight. Is anyone opposed to that? Councillor Thompson, as the mover, do you wish to speak to the motion?
I'm having the same troubles, Madam Mayor, with the mute button myself. Look, there's not much to say to that, other than it's very procedural to accept a routine recommendation for council and delegated committee meetings throughout the year, so that there's transparency for the community. So very wholeheartedly recommend that, so that we can get upon council duty in 2023. Thanks, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. And as the motion was not opposed, I propose to now put that motion. All those in favour? Thank you. That is carried unanimously. That brings us to the end of the agenda for this evening. I congratulate all of my councillor colleagues on their appointments to our councillor assignments for 2022/23. And those that remain undecided, as far as assignments and committees and so forth are concerned, we will discuss in the new year. So thank you to the community, family and friends for watching this evening. These are important proceedings. And thank you for watching via our council website. Bear with me while I can't get to the bottom of the page. And I can now declare the council meeting closed. Thank you and take care.